Can you comment on the relationship between cannabis and the opioid crisis as you sit?
Yeah, it's difficult to get off completely. And cannabis, I've seen, help people with anxiety. It helps, there's been some tests done where it shows that anxiety or... We did the cows test to see with people to see how replacing opioids or cannabis would help. And it actually produces a lot of the withdrawal symptoms for some people. And some people use it with like suboxone or methadone just to deal with the trauma and the stress and pain or long-term pain. And I think that it's really been shown and been studied to be very useful in this crisis. And so, you know, we're working to bring back our program. And I hope that people will support it so that people can have safe access to, you know, cannabis, which certainly won't kill anyone and maybe is very helpful in this crisis.
Hello, everyone. Thank you very much to the mayor and councillors for taking a closer look at this important issue. Thanks also to the courageous speakers for standing up and sharing their stories. It's great to see so many new faces here and thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Sorry if I'm speeding through this stuff, I've got a lot to cover. My name is Jeremiah Van Meren. I'm here to speak to an issue that seems to be totally overlooked in the report, and that's cannabis as a substitution for opioids. There's a significant body of scientific evidence and peer-reviewed studies that show that cannabis dispensaries save lives. Other speakers are going to get into the details and give you some resources there. There are many. But study after study shows that counties that have functioning cannabis dispensaries show a significant decrease in opioid deaths. These counties also show a decrease in fatal drug-driving crashes, as reported by Forbes magazine and other mainstream media, because people use cannabis instead of alcohol. The counties also show a decrease in overall crime and a reduction in street dealers. Medical marijuana patients who have proved their constitutional right to access cannabis in the Canadian courts have been in dire need of places to get medicine across Canada. Many patients use cannabis as a substitution for addictive opioids and painkillers. And Vancouver medical cannabis dispensaries have played a vital role in providing quality medicine to those who aren't comfortable purchasing from street dealers. Over the past 25 years, more than 100 dispensaries have opened in the city of Vancouver to help avert this growing medical health access crisis. I'm CEO of a chain of cannabis stores in the city called Cannabis Culture. We have four stores in the city and we employ over 100 people. Our headquarters has been around for 25 years. We see thousands of medical patients every month, many of them senior citizens who thank us for being their only available source of medicine. They appreciate that they can look and smell their medicine before making a purchase to see if it's the type that will work for them. Different strains have different effects on different people. Chemicals in the plant called terpenes dictate these effects and they can be identified through smell and taste. It's called the entourage effect. CNN's got some great videos about it. That's why strain selection is so important to patients. Cannabis Culture also donates product every month to activist groups like the Cannabis Substitution Project and SARAH and the project she's working on, who provide free cannabis edibles to people in East Vancouver as a way to help reduce dependency on deadly opioids. City of Vancouver in the past has recognized this need and set up a municipal program to license these cannabis dispensaries that open to service violently, even when they were against federal law. Former councillor saw the important work we were doing and while we faced the threat of arrest and designed a system that was supposed to allow them to continue. Right now, unfortunately, the patients we serve are terrified. Some of them come in crying. They're extremely scared that soon they will lose their only source of access to medicine that works for them. That's because the city of Vancouver is threatening to close all the medical marijuana dispensaries down immediately. The city is telling our lawyers that they will arrest us, find us, and shutter the buildings if we don't comply right away. We've been told by the mayor that we should just get with the program and legalize and apply for a new license. We've heard this through the media, who is really starting to pay attention to this issue. Here's me on the cover of the Star Metro from a couple days ago, talking about it. Well, I wanted to tell you directly, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, we have been trying. We have applied and we're continuing to apply at all of our stores. Unfortunately, all of our locations, according to the new city bylaws, are disqualified due to harsh proximity rules because we are within 300 meters of a school, a community center, or another dispensary. The vast majority of Vancouver's current dispensaries have the same problem and they are disqualified from getting a new license completely. That will not change unless the bylaws change. So we're being told to get a license that we simply cannot get. And the mayor's answer to the media is that dispensaries who are struggling with licensing should just close down. Well, that answer is tough to swallow for the thousands of patients and customers that we serve and the hundreds of staff people that we employ at $15 and $20 an hour. It's going to be a tough Christmas for them. There are no legal stores in Vancouver yet, though we've been promised some soon. The problem with the licensed stores, after they make it through the difficult licensing process, is staying open and paying rent while you're not actually open for business. That gets very expensive. At the same time, the media has reported that licensed stores have virtually no supply because of massive shortages across the country due to over-restrictive federal and provincial regulations. These shortages could last for years. Anyone who has purchased a legal product also knows it isn't very good. Bad medicine is not effective for patients. As well, the new rules currently ban cannabis edibles, extracts, and topicals, which many patients use instead of smoking. Unfortunately, mail-order cannabis doesn't work for those who use cannabis as a substitute for opioids, who don't have an address and don't have a credit card. That's a lot of people out there. The new rules also specifically ban giving away cannabis for free, which is a major problem. They also ban stores from large...
It bans shopping malls.
Okay, sorry. They also ban cannabis stores from large portions of the downtown east side. They also ban consumption spaces, which we need drastically. So the harms caused by closing these stores is immediate. Loss of access for thousands, loss of hundreds of jobs, and a loss of a safe alternative to medicine to opioids and other addictive drugs.
Very much, that's for five minutes.
Okay. Would somebody...
We have a...
I have a couple, just two more paragraphs, if anybody would like to...
And we are talking about a report here today.
Yes.
You seem to be outside of that purview.
No, I'll wrap it right back around to one.
Thank you, Stephen here, he's got your five minutes. So thank you for that. Any other questions from councillor Carr?
Yes, Mr. Van Der Kerkhove. I do have some questions.
Sure.
So let me start by saying, first of all, do you have any sense of how many customers of the various cannabis stores who think they're... these are medicinal cannabis, I'm thinking of this one because you know what I'm getting at.
Yep.
That actually are individuals who are replacing opioid use. You mentioned some who don't have a fixed address, who don't have any credit cards, they have this opioid substitution. Any sense of the number?
Off the top of my head, no, thousands, literally thousands. We serve many, many people all the time. And I'm there myself, seeing these people come in. They are in pain, many of them. Many of them are facing all kinds of different medical conditions and including using opioids. You know, people get that as a prescription from their doctor and there's also people who are eventually addicted to those things and they try to use cannabis to get off of those things. In terms of the actual percentages, I can't say for sure, but it's a lot of people. People talk about it all the time in our stores. We help each other some day.
Okay. And you've mentioned the report, it's going to be for the report. And you said that because the report doesn't deal with this issue. So if there were real recommendations in this report that is dealing with the opioid crisis, are we on the issues you raised, opioid substitution in the form of cannabis? What would that recommendation be?
Well, I was going to say, I ask you guys, what are the harms of allowing the dispensaries to remain open? Are there any harms at all of allowing them to remain open? We definitely know of the harms for closing them. It could mean death for people, could mean all kinds of horrible things, pain and suffering. So I've come to plead with you guys here to not destroy our community. We've all been begging you to allow us to exist. We want to get licensed, we want to help change their system for the better. We ask that you consider changing the proximity rules and the other restrictive rules immediately to something that doesn't automatically eliminate the majority of the dispensaries. And, you know, we're harm reduction workers, we really are. If you guys want to ignore that, you can, but it's true. Please help us continue to save lives. The power to fix this issue is in your destiny.
Regarding proximity, can you tell me how many of the cannabis dispensaries, medicinal cannabis dispensaries are not license-able? Are meters close to a school or a community center or those kinds of things? How many are in that cannabis?
A whole heck of a lot of them. It's the majority of the dispensaries that have opened in the past, you know, 25 years are too close to other things to survive. When the new rules were made at the very first, the media was looking at this and they said 85% of the dispensaries were in zones that were immediately disqualified. There's the option of going through the Board of Variants, but as we, anybody who's been through the process like us have gone through, it's nearly impossible to get through that process. So yes, the majority of them. And, you know, a lot of people, when you guys opened it up, sent their applications in for this whole thing. You guys were going to look at that, but only 19 of those actually made it through in three, more than three years, almost four years. So, you know, with the idea of going forward that this was supposed to protect the dispensaries that were there, it quite frankly doesn't do that. I mean, it doesn't protect 85% of the dispensaries that are there. They can't get these licenses.
Okay. If you could send me the statistic, if you can work that out later on, about how many are within proximity rules, within 300 meters proximity of another store as opposed to the public facilities like schools and communities, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely, I'd be happy to provide all of you guys with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much, it's councillor Wade. Yeah, for the opioid substitutes, because that's what we're going to talk about today, is it mostly the edibles or the smokeables that it would be?
I don't think it's mostly either of them. I think people use all of the substances, like any form of cannabis, as a substitute for these dangerous drugs. People smoke it just as much as they use edibles. The edibles are very effective for people who aren't comfortable smoking. In the downtown east side, we see that the groups like the Cannabis Substitution Project just use mostly the edibles to do that because it's easy, you know, it's stronger in a way. It also has a similar effect to some of the other opioids. You know, cannabis is different. When you choose different strains, you really do need to be able to smell those strains, know if they're sativa's in because those terpenes profiles become very important because some people when they smoke, it might have a negative effect on them. When they get the strain that they like, which you can determine by smell and taste, it helps them effectively. So having that range of options of product, I think, is one of the key important parts of this. Like I said, edibles, topicals, and extracts right now, which are powerful things for people, are all completely banned in the new regulations. They're looking at opening that up soon. But currently, that doesn't help the people who are using them now. And really, when, you know, the proximity rules and the other rules make it nearly impossible. Like, we've been here for 25 years, all we want is to get a license and do what we're supposed to do. You know, we'll do whatever you guys ask of us. But, you know, destroying us completely for us is not an option. And, you know, for our patients and customers and our staff, it's really detrimental and terrifying.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That took five minutes.
Thank you, councillor. I am going to hand around some information that you've all received in your emails. It's six pages. And we are talking about the opioid situation at this time. I didn't have one copy to refer to, and now it's too long. So first of all, mayor, thank you for saying that bold actions may be taken together with all partners to change the course of the crisis. And it is true, sir, that while the city is not mandated to deliver health services, it can promote access to a wide range of treatment options. I have provided with you here today five studies, not by a bunch of pot activists, but by the researcher, the social science research number, the Journal of Health Economics, the U.S. National Institute on Drug Abuse, the National Bureau of Economic Research, and the Journal of the American Medical Association. All of these studies are proving without a doubt that cannabis, not just cannabis itself, but cannabis dispensaries reduce deaths and overdoses by up to 33%. And that is a significant number, that is huge. We do need safe supply to drugs for those who want to use it. We do need consumption sites for those who need to use it. But what we need more than any of that is a safer alternative, a safer choice. And for SARAH, like as many of the advocates working on the downtown east side and elsewhere, even at the UBC, where there is now professorship studying cannabis opioids, the evidence is clear that people who use addictive drugs are seeking a safer choice. I myself was addicted to cocaine and antidepressants, and I quit both with the use of cannabis. Cannabis saved my life. I came to Vancouver in 2004 and I started drinking heavily. I could have become an alcoholic, but cannabis saved my life. Cannabis is not just a safer choice for people who are already addicted and suffering, it's a safer choice for those who are predisposed or likely to result in using harmful addictive drugs. For all the young people in our city who go to bars and use alcohol every night and for everybody using opioids and other drugs, cannabis is a safer choice. You don't have to be sick and dying and on the edge of an overdose dose to benefit from cannabis. Cannabis dispensaries, as you can see, are proving to reduce these overdoses and it's noticeable effects immediately between areas that have them and areas that don't. And even worse, when you close dispensaries, you increase deaths. So if City Hall does absolutely nothing about dispensaries, doesn't close them, doesn't open them, doesn't do anything, we'll be okay. But if you close dispensaries and evidence shows opioid deaths will increase. The last two pages I have for you, recommended addition. You already have section I out of the alphabetical letters. You can throw in one more little "that". That councillor issued emergency interim business licenses and/or temporary bylaw exemptions to all medicine cannabis dispensaries currently providing access to proven harm reduction alternatives based on scientific evidence proving the immediate and demonstrable effectiveness of cannabis as a substitution choice for consumers of opioids and other drugs. Or you could go even further, put in a whole new letter, "O", withdraw the city order to close medical dispensary access points and issue emergency permits to operate. And I include a few little, you know, details there about why and how that can be done. And I will be allowing to you now just a few more final points. We can prevent the development of more addictions and overdoses from alcohol, opioids, and other drugs by providing a safer choice. The B.C. Centre of Substance, which was speaking earlier, noted in 2018, this year in March, that daily cannabis use could delay at-risk youth from moving to higher-risk drug use. They're saying, they've studied, that young people who don't use needles and opioids, if they're given access to cannabis, they're far less likely to use those hard drugs. We could save lives before people are in a crisis situation. For the workers on the front lines who have been sacrificing their time, they're in trauma. I feel traumatized because we're constantly under threat, but they're traumatized too. Mr. Mayor, please, consider that they are traumatized and cannabis is proven for veterans and frontline workers alike to be a treatment for this trauma and this pain. Safe drug supply is key, but what consumers want is a safer choice. And donations of cannabis cost money to dispensaries, but dispensaries as businesses are paying taxes, hiring employees, and giving this cannabis to people. Our own employees at Cannabis Culture, many of them are at-risk youth themselves. They can't find jobs elsewhere. And if they lose their jobs, they will lose their homes. And many of them are already struggling with other drugs. We provide a safe workplace and a safe space, plus peaceful civil disobedience. Mr. Mayor, you and others here recognize that important social issues require taking a stand, even when bigger powers at higher levels of government might be telling you to do otherwise. But when it means that it's an issue like this, where you can make a difference by taking a stand, where Vancouver's historical reputation as a drug policy leader could make a difference, you have a court decision now telling you you have the right to do whatever you would like to do in order to address this. So please consider my recommendations to the task force and thank you for your time.
Councillor Deitch, please go ahead.
Specifically to the task force's recommendations. You had talked about, and the previous speaker had talked about, access to cannabis. So I'm wondering, with the dispensary and the decision that's recently come down, are you suggesting that the city of Vancouver take a different stand against what the courts have ruled on?
Well, the city of Vancouver went to court with this. So it was the city of Vancouver versus dispensaries. The city of Vancouver could say, you know what? Upon reviewing the recent news that Justin Trudeau, our own prime minister, admits there will not be cannabis supply for the recreational chains, and there are no medical stores. Consider that all of the current supply in the legal system, it won't even be available. So access is an issue when a patient...
So I have a question. You had said went to court versus or against, but I understand from our staff that actually they were voluntary participants to move forward with that.
Well, the test case was certainly something we could opt to join in with, but if we hadn't joined in, we would have still been affected by the decision. So the concern right now is that the city of Vancouver's move to shut down dispensaries isn't really addressing an actual public health or safety threat.
Okay, so Melissa, thank you for addressing that question. I also, in looking at this and looking at the way that these, like, looking at the four killers approach, one part of that approach is enforcement. So I believe that we have to firmly look at other approaches, including harm reduction, including the Naomi trial, that was very short-lived here in Vancouver, including the, a number of different ideas that the task force is looking at. I'm not going to go through each and every one of them that SARAH Lyle spoke to. I believe we need to look at that. But in looking at how to keep these drugs out of our system and make sure that, I mean, for every one medical marijuana dispensary, there could be another one that is actually a retail store and is being supplied by an organization that's involved in other activities. Is that correct?
Well, criminalization of drugs creates the criminal market. If people are engaged in peaceful, nonviolent, consensual transactions with other adults, there really is no crime, there's no victim. But the government has criminalized cannabis, which creates risk, which increases the reward, which incentivizes unsavory dangers, people that get involved. And when the government cracks down on peaceful operators like ourselves, who you can call, you can call me, talk to me, anything.
Yeah, and you don't have to step in with it.
When you shut down all businesses, when you shut down businesses that are open, you're giving a free handout to the gangsters and people who are bad because they don't care about this.
So can I ask a question? I'm asking a question because I'm trying to figure out a way to, if there was a way to work this, that, because cannabis is now legal and there is a framework and there is a system and the system eventually one day will be no different in a sense than if we have regulations and a system for the liquor, for liquor in B.C. That's how I have been told the framework will work out. So I am just wondering, as you had said, there's many peaceful operators, there's many people who are free of all of those issues that I have concern around. So would you suggest something like, and I'm going to ask you specifically about this because I put a motion forward last term, you may inspire me to bring it back, but self-reporting, like audited financial statements for dispensaries?
We pay all our taxes, we do everything.
No, I mean, like provide to the city of Vancouver audited financial statements to show where the supply is coming from, where the money is coming from? Is that something you would support?
Oh, I'd be happy to. The danger right now is that most of the suppliers, many of whom are licensed actually, federally licensed for medical production or for other patients, so they are legal in a sense, just not legal commercial. But a lot of suppliers can't really out themselves because they are at risk of criminal retaliation and significant serious penalties. So the law is forcing them to hide, whereas if they allowed them to come forward, you could meet them. There are good and bad operators in every business. I'm sure you all know from restaurants and bars and everything. But with the dispensaries right now, again, the threat of closure makes good decent people afraid and they back out. And people who aren't afraid will step in and feel like that.
Thank you, and I understand that. I just, I'm looking for a system or a framework. And that's very helpful to know that you'd support audited financials.
And I will note that, and then argue, the medical marijuana related use bylaws that city council did pass acknowledge that these businesses were providing cannabis that is not from a federal pipeline of cannabis. It was illicit, but it works. And every day of delay makes more people suffer. And again, please look at these studies because without a doubt, one life saved by access to cannabis is worthwhile and worth immediate action.
I call it a councillor, we have to...
Thank you, Melissa.
Yeah, I know organizations like HiHope will get me so put someone through all the nights so that they won't be opioids that night and they'll be alive the next day. What is the kind of substitute that you'd normally utilize in a medical way for someone using opioids? Is there a certain...
Oh, gummies and edibles have worked really well. And SARAH, like and others, Neil Magnussen, the Cannabis Substitution Project, HiHope, they find people really just want the edibles. They want just a cookie or a gummy bear because they can take it and be fine. If you're smoking a joint on the street, you might attract law enforcement attention, especially those who are already living on the street and don't have safe housing. So the use of cannabis in smoking it can actually bring you more scrutiny and harm. So a lot of users would prefer to have a packet of gummies in their pocket and eat one and they're okay. But for many users, it's the immediate onset of smoking. If they only have $5 from their welfare check, $5 bill that they've managed to get, they can go to a dispensary, get a joint, smoke half that joint and feel okay. But when the mayor, respectfully, sir, when you say that there is a legal way for people to access it, it's through the mail. I'm a medical patient, I'm signed up, I do it. I use my credit card, it costs at least $700. Most people don't have that. You need it to your home or you give a signature. A lot of people don't have that. And you have to wait days. So the immediate storefront access is actually so key. People can come in and just get a small amount at one time. And we even have programs where people donate their cannabis. If they're visiting the lounges that we have or any other area, they can leave behind their cannabis for others and it does save lives. So again, while it's true there is a legal system in place, the fact is it's broken. And Justin Trudeau and businesses across Canada and the Privacy Commissioner of Canada admit that the current system is flawed and preventing access and it won't be fixed for some time. And Vancouver showed great leadership under our former mayor, and I hope our current mayor, who also engaged in peaceful civil disobedience and, you know, court order breaking, might recognize the value of people taking this bold action and the city saying, you know what, despite the federal laws and despite the prohibitions, we have done the right thing before with Insight, needle exchanges, and all sorts of other important issues. Why not do the right thing that the science proves from decades of research, peer-reviewed sites, that cannabis dispensaries specifically save lives and that when you close dispensaries, you cause more deaths? It's irrefutable and you have the right and the right of goodness and not just the legal right to do this.
Another thing that was brought up was spaces for drug users to be together and doing that. I know that that's involved in the cannabis culture. Can you explain how you think that could grow if we're looking at different drugs as well?
Oh, it's so key. It's no doubt that people in the downtown east side are now, and as we've heard, lack of community and lack of support systems are deadly. People who are alone and isolated are more likely to die. I can tell you that we finished Canadian Mental Health Center Association training with our managers because our employees, many of them, like I noted, are people who have substance abuse issues or struggle and they can't get a job elsewhere and you're the only place they can get a job. And they literally call us the family. That our lounges bring together people from all over the world and come together and go, I can't believe I get to sit next to someone like me. I get to feel like someone who drinks coffee or someone who does yoga or someone who rides a bicycle. I get to be with people like me. That is so invaluable. It destroys the stigma. It enables conversation. They can talk to each other about what works. They can connect someone with another healthcare provider. These meeting spaces are essential and these consumption spaces are key, whether it's a tip thrown up at the overdose prevention site or a lounge where consumers choose to come and gather together. But these community spaces are so valuable. The West End Davy Street location has drag nights and music nights and jam nights and we have art on the wall and we do fundraisers and we do charities. Mr. Mayor, we contribute to the city, not just through employment and taxes, but through an actual lifesaving service. And I need to note again that it isn't fair to say that someone has to be at their last breath with a needle in the hand before we can say, yes, you deserve cannabis access. It's someone like me or anyone here or your children who are pressured to drink alcohol, who are pressured to pop a Xanax in high school. This is horrifying to me when the evidence shows and B.C. Centre of Substance Use shows that more cannabis access and use by all people benefits public health, it doesn't harm it. And again, Mr. Mayor, I've noticed you paying such close attention to every speaker here with consideration and compassion in your eyes. I can't help but feel a little bit right now that when the media has set us up, you know, Jogi says, mayor says, I don't like that. I'm not here to be confrontational.
Laura Finan, thank you. Go ahead, Laura, the councillor.
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Emery. I just want to pull it back to the real specific opioid recommendations because we've sort of gotten into the dispensary conversation a bit more. I know that's an issue, but not this issue. It's connected, but I'm wondering, do you see, let's take aside the dispensary issue for a moment. Can we focus, is it a bit, do you have any thoughts about how we might add cannabis substitution into our existing and proposed systems as it stands now? Without getting into the dispensary idea, actually similar to the work with SARAH Lyle on the overdose prevention permit.
Yeah, and I'm not a city councillor yet, but I wrote up something in this report that I hope sounds a little bit like nice legal municipal language. But quite frankly, you can just insert right into the recommendations that we recommend holding back on enforcement on these facilities that are offering harm reduction and safer choice alternatives.
But I'm sorry, and I did read that in the recommendation. I'm trying to pull it away from the dispensary, the physical dispensary issue because that is a whole other complicated issue. We're in a pretty big crisis mitigation process right now. You know, without getting into that, that's opening a whole other flank. So I'm more looking at how we might bring medical cannabis into like insight kind of environments and do we have thoughts on that kind of a thing? Existing non-cannabis-related infrastructure?
In fact, a few years ago, Stop the Marijuana's B.C., which was started by a former, or Dr. Evan Wood of the B.C. Centre of Substance Abuse and others, he proposed, why don't we open up a cannabis medical storefront with a section 56 exemption like Insight did? with a Section 56 exemption like Insight did? Where we, I now understand that the exemption means you won't criminalize people who show up at this site and Insight doesn't provide the drugs that are being used. But for cannabis use and access and, I mean, I'm so sort of, I can't get away from the fact that we can't separate dispensaries and the opioid crisis. Like specifically, this is about, the dispensaries are about the opioid crisis. That's what these studies say. They aren't even saying medical marijuana generally. In fact, the studies say that even places that legalize marijuana or medical marijuana that don't allow dispensaries do not have any protective results. Only those that allow dispensaries and in fact a liberal allowance, a non-restrictive allowance, see opioid crisis alleviation, direct result. Opioid deaths, use overdoses go down with dispensaries. It is, you cannot pull them apart. So the medical cannabis issue, I think right now the city needs to do is to address the fact that federal law and provincial regulations prohibit medical access points. The retail level being asked to apply for, Mr. Mayor, is for recreational sales. There is no opportunity for medical storefronts to offer these services. And there were dispensaries that were providing free opioid substitution. So you sell to somebody who comes in and spends money to do cannabis instead of alcohol and then someone who comes in with an addiction can get cannabis for free because that customer paid the company. So I, again, Mr. Mayor, you kept paying so much attention to every other speaker, but it looks like you can't wait for me to stop talking and that breaks my heart. Because I'm a Green Party candidate of the past, I'm an advocate for our community and our society and it just seems to me that you're treating this like a joke and that really, really breaks my heart. Because cannabis saved my life and it saved other people's lives and for you to dismiss this when the city of Vancouver has a history from Sam Sullivan and Larry Campbell and so many others, they took courageous stands. And I implore you to do the same and not give in to political cowardice, which is so easy to do that, sir, there's so many years for you to make this right.
I'm just, Mr. Mayor, the conversation has gone as well and to have their own opinions, but name calling of anyone in the chamber, I'd just like to caution everyone, I would ask you caution.
Yeah, I asked what the name calling was and I said political cowardice, but that applies to Trudeau and also to government and not simply to you, Mr. Mayor, but...
I have more questions, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, your time is very dear.
Thank you very much, it's a personal miracle, please.
Okay, thank you very much. Welcome to the next speaker, Neil Magnusson.
New mayor and councillor and congratulations on being here and having what I'm sure is a very educational and dynamic day for you. I'm the founder and the director of the Cannabis Substitution Project. I have an informed apartment, I'd like to have land around. The only two things should be needed to be said here. Cannabis is safe, one of the safest therapeutically active compounds known to man according to D.E.E. Judge Francis Young. And it's effective in offsetting the use of opioids and other things, as has been pointed out by Jeremiah and by Jody. And I thank Jeremiah and Jody for bringing to this discussion cannabis as a substitution because really it's the invisible elephant in the room and in your report. It was two years ago, or more than that, that I came before councillor, a different councillor with a couple of notable exceptions, and proposed what we were going to do. I had unanimous consent from the board of Van Dooe to start handing out cannabis edibles on the downtown east side for free to people, try to make it as easy as possible for people to get off of the street drugs. There wasn't one question for me after I presented that to councillor. I had a lawyer lobby councillor and lawyer for a couple of months after that with no response, no support. So during that time, I'd also gotten donations and support from the cannabis community. So after a couple of months, I just went to Van Dooe and started handing them out. Well, the CSP is now almost two years in existence. It'll be died in February. For the first year, every Saturday and every single Saturday, we met at Van Dooe and for the last 10 months, we've been there every Thursday and every Sunday. I took the lunch break to go and hand out care packs of cannabis edibles to people on the downtown east side, which I say that we do twice a week since last February. We have a lineup of somewhere in the neighborhood of 160, 170 people every time to get their care packs. There's four to six edibles, there's top fill creams, there's caps, there's a couple of joints. With respect to edibles, I will say that edibles do work better than joints for substituting off of opioids. The joints work because they work right away and 45 minutes later, the edible's kicking. And that's what really works. They're processed through the liver, not through the lungs. They last much longer, like hours longer and they're much stronger that way. And I learned back in 2004 when I opened Van Dooe's second dispensary called The Herb School, that good strong cannabis edibles can help opioid addicts get right through the night of withdrawal without eating anything else. And cannabis is an exit drug, absolutely, for people wanting to get off of that. And as Jody referenced, there's a number of people working in her stores and dispensaries and a number of people working in dispensaries all over the city that'll tell you cannabis saved their life and that they used to be hard drug addicts and now they're just using cannabis. We have about 100 regulars in our lineup that have been there almost from the start, many of them well over a year for sure. And we've never had one reported overdose death amongst our regulars that are using cannabis as a substitute. And these are hard drug users and ex-hard drug users. All of it is by donations and volunteers. We have no help from government. In fact, no one from the city, police or postal health has even ever come to check us out and see what we're doing, even though we're giving out hundreds and hundreds of this criminally illegal product every single time. And I told the police board, I went before the police board and told them what we were doing. I told you people what we're doing. I've given out thousands and thousands of these. I've been to numerous events all over the place. And we're not trying to hide, we're not trying to conceal anything. What we're doing is criminal according to the government law, but it's certainly not criminal according to reason. I think the government law has no force in effect and it's not causing someone to prevent harm, but it's actually causing harm itself. And these laws need to be violated by this city council and you need to allow, in fact, you should be declaring Vancouver a sanctuary for medical cannabis. There's no provision within the federal structure for cannabis legalization to allow for medical cannabis stores. And that's according to the alert decision, Judge Fain said it was at the heart of access and crucial to have medical cannabis access and there's no provision within the federal regulations. So thankfully now Vancouver can do that yourself. And please do, please help us save lives through cannabis. I know you didn't want to hear about dispensaries anymore, but I'm telling you dispensaries are the key to this access to cannabis which will offset the opioid crisis. It's not the only solution, there needs to be others as well, but it's a huge one. We also need access to consumption lounges as Julian's mentioned. They should be mandatory with medical dispensaries. It's a sense of community for people, it's a place where people can feel free to go and safe to go. The federal government continues to be in violation of Judge Fain's declaration that medical dispensaries are crucial and at the heart of access because as I said, they have no provision for this. It's major hypocrisy. Commercial tobacco is in all gas stations and grocery stores across this country, doesn't matter how close they are to schools. We have recreational alcohol dispensaries all over the city. There's thousands of them. They're all clustered together, they're side by side. They don't have the same restrictions as medical cannabis dispensaries. It's complete hypocrisy and it's killing people. And that's why it needs to stop. We need to have treatment on demand and this is treatment on demand. We need to have safe access to safe drugs. These are safe drugs. We need to have choices for people. This is the choice they need to make. We also need to, you should probably add into your report not just that dispensaries are providing access and should be a crucial part of your task forces recommendations is to keep them open, but also to educate the public about this. Because it's not just the downtown east side where people are dying of overdoses, it's all across the city. And many people, if they really understood that cannabis edibles could help them get through the night and not crave those other drugs that are potentially deadly, then they would choose that if they knew that was an option. So you need to really publicize that as well. The role of government is not to stifle business and commerce, the role of government is to encourage commerce and to facilitate. Regulations come into play whenever there's problems to do with things that are being sold and how they're being used. But regulations, and I see my time is running out. I hope you'll be a little generous with me because I have five minutes for everybody here, very essential here. But regulations need to be to the point where an underground market does not become viable and prohibition just flat out doesn't work. And there's a whole bunch of solutions to this problem that we have, but there's only one real cause and that's prohibition and over restriction.
Thank you very much, here's my minister. We have a question, who wants to question?
Thank you, Neil Magnusson. I want to focus because again, I think it was 369 people died last year. And what we've heard from the various speakers over the course of the day so far is the number one issue has been safe supply of the drugs that are causing the crisis. And our objective, of course, we're not going to solve all society's ills, but we're trying to get into a balanced situation, get ourselves out of this crisis. So safe supply was number one. We've heard that physical locations are important, not just in the downtown east side, but through the body of the city in order to provide other people other places to go because we know apart from the downtown east side that people are dying at home because they're not out where anybody else can see them. We've heard that education plays an important role in this and including starting with kids as young as middle school so that they won't start experimenting with bad folks. And what I've heard from you is a dimension of harm prevention through providing alternatives. Would you characterize it that way?
Yeah, I think safe supply doesn't necessarily just need to be the drugs of choice, but safe supply should be whatever drug is going to get them what they're actually seeking.
But that may be the case, but what we're here about is the opioid crisis and saving lives. And I haven't heard of anybody that has died in an overdose of marijuana.
That hasn't happened.
Right, so bringing us back to the core purpose. I'm just concerned that the issue of what's gone on with the medical marijuana dispensaries is being conflated with this life and death issue of the opioid crisis. So the best takeaway that I've got from this is that as we look at things like physical locations and we look at education that maybe part of that could be looking at harm prevention through alternatives if people are going to use drugs, then it better be marijuana, which is going to have beneficial effects than is going to end them dead in their apartments.
Absolutely.
So that would be a good takeaway, not that we're going to conflate that with what's going on in your industry, but rather dealing specifically with this opioid crisis.
And I gotta bring it back to cannabis dispensaries. They are safe spaces for people, provide education for people. I know, I'm very in touch with most of the dispensaries in Vancouver. I've been an advocate for a very long time. As I said, I was involved in opening Vancouver's second dispensary back in 2004. And every single dispensary that's out there has clientele, they are using cannabis in replacement of opioids and tell those people that they're saving their lives. They all have compassionate pricing situations for people that can't afford it. I want to mention the 420 farmers market as well. It was operating in Robson until the city and the police shut them down. Now they're in another park regularly on the weekends. Those people are there providing access to cannabis edibles to the people on opioids. They have been all along and they provide a lot of free edibles to people. They're in a park right now that's close to the downtown east side and when they go there, they clean the park of needles before they start and they're being threatened by the city to be shut down as well. And I think that this city really needs to pay attention to its history and the other mayors that have come before. Although I will say it's the activists that have pretty much dragged the councils a little bit kicking and screaming into progressive drug policy over the years. But you look like very good people to me. And I think that if you really think about, you know, that laws aren't in effect if they're hurting people and they really only should be in effect if they're keeping people from being harmed. And to be worried about federal laws when people's lives are at risk and we can't have medical dispensaries because the federal government isn't allowing for that. People are dying, the laws would be damned in that case. And I hope that you have that same idea like Sarah had and like I've had. You know, even though you guys wouldn't give me approval to do it, I said we needed to do because it was a federal matter and it was illegal, we went ahead and did it. Now we've been doing it for almost two years. We haven't had one overdose death amongst the people that are using our project. So I hope that you will listen to what's being said today as well and be bold and stand in the face of laws that don't make any sense, that are archaic, that are there to protect other than the people because that's always what drug prohibition is all about, is protecting other than the people. If I could, for just a couple of minutes, I wrote a letter.
Okay, well, I just want to finish up. And again, I appreciate that cannabis may well have a positive impact in providing alternatives for opioids. But I don't want to conflate a commercial and legal exercise that's going on with the dispensaries with the core issue of the opioid crisis.
Thank you very much.
I do, just don't do anything.
I want to consider, thank you very much.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Magnusson. I appreciate you coming in and my question is really very specific coming out of you providing edibles and products in the downtown east side. So your cannabis substitution project, I think, has been very much supported and I think people are very grateful for it. You still have 160 people or so line up to get those substitutions?
Even in the rain.
Pardon me?
Even in the rain, you must be giving some good insurance.
So where's your supply? Do you get it from the cannabis stores?
So here's a typical care pack. I have these which are ordered online and there's a very compassionate person who's generous and has told me that I can order $10,000 worth of these gummies every month. And that's what I do. They arrive at my post office box and I divide them up and give them up. So that's those ones. This is from a dispensary in Gibson's. It's licensed by their municipality to operate, S&amp;M Sweet Shop. And they give me hundreds and hundreds of these because he's an ex-opioid addict who wants to give back to what our project is doing, helping people transition off of those street drugs. This is a cookie that we've had for almost the full time that we've been there. It's made by now an ex-school teacher. He was a high school teacher that quit his job to go full time in doing this. He supplies Sarah with these cookies, he supplies us. And we found another injection site as well. And they're not safe, by the way, even, they're supervised because they're not safe. They're not safe injection sites. They're safer, but there's no way to safely inject drugs. A doctor doesn't inject it safely. There's no safety, you stick it in your arm and inject something. That's why they're supervised and that's why we don't call them safe and we do call them supervised. But he's supplying those people and this is extremely wholesome. There's no nuts and he wants to give people healthy food and he also just wants to give back because of his previous experience with opioids. This is from a gummy manufacturer who wants to be legal and they packaged them as close as they can to be illegal. But he's lost most of his dispensaries that he sells into because of the ban on edibles and most of these dispensaries want to become non-medical government stores. So his business is way down. He used to just supply these, almost the same amount of value as what we're getting these, without any charge, but because his business went way down, he had to go back to work and we have to supply him with cannabis in raw form for him to make these gummies for us. But they're standardized dose, they're all on there and they're trying to be legal. The person that allows me to order $10,000 worth of gummies every month also supplies this 175-milligram THC top fill cream for people with skin cancer, for people with pain in their joints. And my people at Van Dooe are just raving about how well that's working. They can't get enough of that. We also have caps provided by people. They're 30 milligrams, which is about the right dose for people. We've had them as high as 100 milligrams, but that can be too much for some people for sure. Way too much for some people, but we're dealing with people that need high dose to use against the opioids. And there's a joint in our bag, as I mentioned before. If I ever don't put a joint in the bag, right away I get called out to the person at my desk that's getting it, just, is there a joint in there? And I wasn't even going to give out joints originally when I first presented it to city council back two years ago. I only wanted to give out edibles because I knew that edibles were effective because of my experience at The Herb School. But I did give out joints because I'm also in charge of having joints rolled up for 420 and Cannabis Day and we had a little bit of a surplus. So when I started giving out the edibles, I also gave out some joints. And then when I tried to stop giving out joints, they're like, no, no, we really need the joints. And I came to understand it's because the edibles take a little while to kick in that they want to have a joint to get them through that time. Cannabis certainly works. I get so many thank yous and so many anecdotal stories of how it's working every time that I'm at Van Dooe, that's twice a week, people are telling me how well it's working for them and keeping them off the line.
Okay, back to the issue of replacement, this is replacement.
That's the idea.
How many, so I was told by an earlier speaker that there may be thousands of people who use the cannabis products as replacement for the opioids and they go into the various cannabis stores. So, but you have 160?
Yeah, we're 160 every time that we're there.
Every time.
It's a long lineup and when we have very, you know, it's enough to satisfy that, but not too much more. It hasn't grown much more than that, surprisingly enough. But I would concur with what Jeremiah said, that there's probably thousands throughout the city because at this point, there's still medical cannabis dispensaries that they can access to. What we're dealing with is a population that deals with poverty as one of their main barriers. And they're willing to stand in the rain and stand in the cold and get some free stuff because they can't afford, these things are expensive because of prohibition prices. Cannabis grows quite easily, it shouldn't be anywhere near as expensive as what it is, but because of prohibition and now the market demand for things, it's a lot higher price leadership. There's a lot of people using cannabis dispensaries in the city.
Thank you very much, Neil Magnusson. Questions? That's it for questions, so thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
A couple of things to speak on here. I have to address a couple of things that have do wrap around and connection with the opioid crisis. That is what is table to table. This is my daughter, Haley. Haley is a medical cannabis patient. Now, please bear with me and I will explain my point. I, unfortunately, I kind of wrote this yesterday, so I did not have time to photocopy these. But these are relevant and will show you multiple reasons why we need to look at things like the Substitution Act, which all of you are well aware of and are looking to. Here are three years' worth of documentation from my daughter's doctor stating that without medical cannabis, she is at risk of life-threatening status epilepticus. My daughter has been fighting Len's Gastrodyspnea syndrome since she was five years old. We are talking 19 years. She's 26 years old now. Yes, you're almost 20, so. In April. Haley was Canada's first federal child patient back in 2008. There's a signature strain called Haley's Comet, named after my daughter. There's a well-known documented strain. And many people who suffer opioid crisis also utilize one-to-one strains, such as my daughter's strain. These are sort of, these are strains that are only able to be accessed in edible form, in concentrations through places like dispensaries. Now, I understand that there was something, but please, listen. I also have, just for confirmation and validation of what I have to say today, I also have Vancouver Coastal Health protocols for inhaled and oral cannabis in the public school system to be administered by staff. So therefore, when you come into issues of administering, how will substitution programs work? Please, the groundwork has already been laid and please utilize these things to help you succeed in your ventures. Let's hand this over. Currently, the laws surrounding medical cannabis allow for some access, and yes, there are legal routes. But as many of my colleagues have stated, it is very difficult to access. In my daughter's particular case, we are legally allowed to grow. We are intern. She received her license for growing once again, although we had fallen out of many times jurisdictions. Thankfully, the cannabis clubs, my daughter is here today. They are literally saving her life today because they are providing cannabis for her in the intern while her crop is legally growing. Why this is important is because the federal government's program, which those who are fighting and trying to survive through this opioid crisis cannot afford access to these. Also, they are not in proper concentration.